Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the May 2nd, 2022 work session agenda of the Salisbury City Council. At this time, we have a proclamation. Mr. Mayor?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Mr. President, we have a couple. I hope that's all right. One of these is not printed in the agenda, but there's a reason for that. So I'm going to start there. May 1st through 7th, 2022 marks the 53rd anniversary of Municipal Clerks Week and is a time for celebration and reflection on the importance of the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government throughout the world. And the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants and provides the professional link between the citizens of Salisbury, the city, and agencies of government at other levels. President Ronald Reagan in 1984 signed a proclamation officially declaring Municipal Clerks Week as the first full week of May, and President Bill Clinton in 1994 and 96 signed proclamations confirming observance of Municipal Clerks Week. Municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and municipal clerks serve as the information center on functions of local government and community. Municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. And City of Salisbury believes it most appropriate to recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk, as well as the commitment to excellence exhibited by the city's master municipal clerk, Kim Nichols, and rising Master Clerk Julie English. Now, therefore, I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim May 1st through 7th, 2022, as Municipal Clerks Week in our city in celebration of the 50th anniversary of Municipal Clerks Week and with gratitude for our, excuse me, 53rd, and with gratitude for our city clerk, Kim Nichols, and Assistant City Clerk Julie English, and the vital services they provide to our city and the Salisbury community. And having once been a council member myself, can say that you survive based on the talent of the municipal clerks. So, here, here.
Thank you.
Now, as printed in your programs, the second proclamation is, this is the recognition of our small businesses. The United States Small Business Administration sponsors National Small Business Week every year to recognize the contributions of entrepreneurs and small business owners, and more than half of the people in the United States either own or work for a small business. And small businesses create nearly two out of every three new jobs each year. And America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risks, and work hard. And from the main street shops to the high-tech startups, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the foundation of our nation's promise. These business owners have exactly what is needed to be successful: the motivation and passion for what they do and what is created by supporting these small businesses, or more job opportunities, and the preservation of our community's unique culture. City of Salisbury supports and joins in this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best: create jobs and build our communities for years to come. Now, therefore, I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim May 2nd through 5th, 2022, as national small business in our city, and I urge all residents to support the small businesses in our community, appreciating and celebrating the personal touches and unique expertise they offer and the economic resilience they foster. Businesses such as Little Leaders Learning Academy? Did I get that right? Pretty close?
Yeah.
Vanessa, would you like to come up here? So, please. So, we are blessed that Salisbury is home to the small business leader and the entrepreneur selected as the U.S. Small Business Administration's Maryland Small Business, or Small Business Entrepreneur of the Year. So, Vanessa, congratulations.
Thank you all. I like my saying that. Yeah, if you have kids, know it's my daycare. I would like to, special thank you to my friend Duran. He's an optician. He owns the Look Optics here in Salisbury as well. So if you need glasses, go see him. And it seems like a lot of you all do. Just kidding. Another small business, yes. But thank you guys so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We also have a presentation from the Criminal Justice Reform Task Force and Chair Eileen Johnson. You come to the podium.
So, Mr. President, by way of introduction, if I may?
Go right ahead.
Can they sit? Is that okay?
Sure. That's fine.
And Chief, I'm going to ask you to come up for a minute, if you don't mind, to join you. Just by way of introduction, I wanted to say thank you to not only all of the members of the task force that worked for over a year, a lot of meetings, a lot of training and learning about our police department, and learning about criminal justice, and also contributing a lot in terms of their knowledge. And I just wanted to share with you that when they delivered their report to the city, we have been reviewing it, assessing what's in progress, what needs additional investment, you know, what requires some legislative fixes in order to move forward. And so that's been the process of the last few weeks, but now I think we're at a moment where we can provide that, and in fact, Chief Duncan sent it to Kim today to distribute to all of you, so you'll get that assessment and a letter from the chief. And, but I think it's critical that you also hear from the leadership of the task force. So I think Chief has some brief remarks, and then we'll hand it over to Eileen. And just want to say once again, thank you for your service to our community. Thank you to your entire committee. You're appreciated.
Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And obviously, I echo those sentiments, so thank you all for your work. It was a long process. I think we battled through COVID through most of it. A lot of it, we found different ways to stay on target and, you know, thank you for all the hard work, dedication, and as you can see, you know, we've made some substantial progress in some areas, and then there are some other areas which I think would need some more review and some more time and some more investment and maybe support from other areas. But as the mayor charged them with working on kind of a global view, I think that they met that challenge well, and you'll see that in their findings. So, thank you.
Thank you. Eileen, the floor is yours.
Please bear with me. I just found out five minutes ago about doing a presentation. I didn't realize that I had 10 minutes to speak, but I'm going to try my best to basically do an overview. And this is Wesley Moore. He's a public defender in Wycomica now. And I think most of our members would have loved to be here, but they weren't able to be here. And on our task force, we had prosecuting attorney, a public defender, a substance use disorder advocate, and peer counselor. We had two child, two youth counselors, and community organizer, a pastor. So it was a real diverse group of people, and so it was a long, hard process. And I think that it should be hard. And I think that, so basically, what happened was after the so-called racial reckoning, after the murder of George Floyd, the mayor called for us to come into existence, and there was a call for applications. And then we sort of floundered. We didn't know what was going on. We didn't, you know, also COVID was happening. And so it wasn't really until when the mayor returned that we found out how to organize ourselves and how to make this work. And we talked with Alyssa Hastings, who helped walk us through the process of what the environmental task force had done, which was incredibly helpful. And we invited in people from all over the county to our meetings to give us their advice and their perspective, what they see on the ground, not just task force members. And then we also just did phone calls and interviews with people. So I would say from all of these recommendations, probably a quarter of them, if I, I would have prepared, I would have really figured out the math on it, but I think that it's about a four, a quarter would be things that we're already doing or information that we already have. So like if we'd have a database that, I'm sorry, a dashboard that you could access when you go to the Salisbury Police Department webpage, if we kind of copy what some other cities have done, we already have a lot of the information we would need for that. And it just creates this, a lot of that is about just this transparency. So a quarter of it, I would say, we have the information and we could do it, or we're already doing it. It's in process, like such as already hiring mental health workers who will accompany officers. I'm not sure where we're at with that, or social workers. And everything's moving towards that direction. We were already headed that way, and of course, it's, everybody agrees, officers, advocates, you know, reform advocates recognize that officers aren't trained for that work. And then I would say a quarter of the recommendations are pertaining to like the county, and the county didn't really ask us, you know, for our recommendations, but we, Mayor Day asked us to include everything. So a quarter of it, I would say, is like outside the scope of the city. It's, you know, like public schools and just the overwhelming support structure in the community. And then I would say half of the recommendations are hard and we're not yet doing, and most of those would be medium or long-term. And they would require collaboration, so collaboration among agencies, and then any growth of the Salisbury Police Department, such as if we had community solutions workers, that would require this collaboration and constant communication and checking in, and a real clear roles and responsibilities, and just time and consistency to make it really work and be successful. So I would say some of the, if I had to, if you look at the table in the beginning of the recommendations, the main part of accountability would be this dashboard and moving towards collecting more data, and Chief has said that she wanted to hire a criminologist. We suggested partnering with Beacon at SU. There are so many people at SU who feel like they want their work to have an impact on the community, and I think we could take better advantage of SU for some of these And including, the public health group had come up with a dat, the idea of a database of different services, and they were, the suggestion was that we use the IT department at, or computer science department at SU. So there, whenever we, and also with implicit bias training, using local educational institutions. There's also at University of Maryland, there's a professor Ray, Dr. Ray Sean or something like that, and he's doing all of this, really pioneering work into implicit bias training and how to make it effective, because we know what we're doing isn't effective. Most of the time, implicit bias training, you are taught that you have a bias, but you're never given any kind of tool for how to combat that. So using SU for, and other educational institutions for those kinds of things. And there was, you know, from people in the, people on the task force, just this agreement that officers need to be more in the community. There's already a lot of effort toward that, and we recognize that there's a huge challenge of staffing. And so that's why we call on, you know, we are suggesting that we have these mental health supports, and then we also have a team of community solutions workers who can handle those 42% of public service calls that never require any kind of arrest or any kind of officers really needed in those situations. And so, but the officers that we do continue to utilize, that they're more on the streets, in the community, and working towards something that I won't see in my lifetime, but what would be substations or community centers all around Salisbury. And we are so grateful for the effort, the work that the city has already done to create those community centers for young people. One of the biggest, I think another one of the most important recommendations is training for officers in youth, child, in brain development among juveniles. And we realized during our, we went to the Citizens Police Academy and realized that that wasn't, there isn't much of that, just in talking with officers. Unfortunately, we lost officers that were on board in the beginning, but we do, everything we did was in effort to make their jobs easier and more fulfilling, and we did call for, you know, more benefits and higher pay for officers and easing the workload of officers. So there's a ton of recommendations, and hopefully it's not overwhelming. And we are so grateful for the opportunity to do this, and we hope that there can be real progress on it, and we're just so grateful for you guys being open to it.
Great. If I could, make a recommendation. Once you hand these out, and we have time, now, we're in the middle of budget right now, so we're not going to have a lot of time to look at some of this, but once we review it, what I would suggest is that we set up another meeting, and then when we, when we can all absorb what's in there, because I'm sure there's a lot of data. I saw multiple pages, so I know that it's going to be an interesting read. And then we'll invite you back, and then we can sit down and make some time, some serious time, when we can go over the whole thing. And if you have updates during the process, please get it, get them to us, because then we can review them before you make the presentation, and we can have a two-way conversation about some of the things. Okay?
Okay. I think that we would probably need to talk with the chief and other city work staff to find out what progress has been made on any of them. And I didn't realize that you hadn't seen it yet. So, yeah, that, I'm glad, I'm glad, because I thought we were already at the point where you had seen it and you were going to have questions.
No, no, we haven't seen it.
Okay.
So if you, if you can hand them out and just, we'll pass them around and...
I just printed...
It's been distributed through email?
Yeah.
She just emailed it to us.
And in addition to that...
Two minutes ago.
Oh, okay, fine. Okay, then that's fine.
So in addition to that, there's also, today, we received sort of an SPD assessment of where everything stands. So you can see, it's coded by like in-progress, and then also what the challenge might be for those things that are longer-term, midterm, which most of those, the challenge is legislative. If it's within our scope, it's legislative. So then we have to have a conversation about, you know, is it a state legislative issue? Is it a municipal legislative issue? Is it a county legislative issue? So that'll require some discussion and research, I'm sure. But at least you have that assessment now.
Yeah, and it was good overview of what went on, so.
Thanks.
I know it's difficult, but if we had it ahead of time, we would probably have a lot more questions, so.
Can you send that to us that has the in-progress and all that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I briefly looked through, as she was talking, I was looking through it. I would suggest, because it's, it's a lot of stuff, that it might have to be broken up into pieces.
Into pieces.
Where, where if it's, I mean, it would be a longer session than the budget session to cover each one of those. So I would, I would suggest maybe two or three items at a time, because some of them could be more in-depth than others, and I think that's a, would be a better way to, to...
Yeah, I think what we need to do is we need to put the chief's comments and everything together so that we can see how they match up.
Starting with the most important ones.
Yeah.
And maybe we can kind of code them, like I guess you already are doing, yeah, coding them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I just sent it to you, and then if you can distribute it to Wes and others.
Yes, I'll do that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for all the work, and please let the rest of the crew know that...
I will, yeah. I really regretted that we couldn't meet. I haven't met some of them in person.
Oh, because of COVID.
Yeah, but it was actually good because people with families could come, you know, you could hear their kids screaming in the back.
Yeah, we've had, we've had some of that.
Yeah.
And dogs barking.
Dogs barking.
Yes.
Birds chirping.
Thanks again.
My bird in the back.
Okay, next up, we have Deputy Chief Chris Obarsky. Chief, how are you? Oh, we got two...
How are you?
And Chief, tell.
You coming with me? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Come before you, looking for a budget amendment to appropriate funds to our operating budget. From a sale of a 2012 International Telstar Horton Amles, it's one of our old amleses that we're not longer in service. We put it on GOV deals and it sold. We are looking to appropriate a total of $20,359.3 to back into our operating budget.
Okay. Questions from the council?
Is the intention to use that for another...
It is. We have intentions for it. We're looking to put $18,359.3 back into our vehicles account, and we're also looking to put the $2,000 into our building account.
Other questions?
Yeah.
We have consensus?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, chiefs.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Enjoy the outside.
Is it the whisperer?
Yes, I don't know what that is, but that's all right. I think we're, I think it was me, actually. Next up, we have Housing and Homeless Manager Christine Chestnut. It was me.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good. So we have been offered, I just keep getting money thrown at me. It's great. We've been offered money called Critical Time Intervention Funding through, it'll come from SAMSA through the Wycomico County Health Department, through the local behavioral health authority. We already received some, some funding through them. This is a different grant. It's from the Silverman School of Social Work. So Critical Time Intervention is intended to provide intensive case management services for those who are in housing and for a nine-month period after they're in housing to keep them in housing. So what they found was that, this, they started this back in the 90s in New York in homeless shelters. They recognized that men were being housed and then returning to homelessness quickly without that support. So what they have realized is that providing that intensive case management for nine months following gets them in, in kind of patterns and behaviors that they should be in, and then to transition from the nine months of services, that to other agencies, you know, other resources in the neighborhood or in the community that are available, but to kind of give them some, you know, because what, we have case management now, but it's not intensive case management. That's just, the only agency that offers that is the ACT team through Lower Shore Clinic. So it provides them that intensive case services, because we have seen in times that we put people in housing and they return to homelessness quickly because they don't have that intensive support, especially if they've lived outside a really long time. Thankfully, some of our people have been in housing the entire six years. We've been here and they're doing great. But this is just funding to help with that. The reason, the amount, it's $12,562. The reason for the small amount is it's from April, really to get us to the end of June. And then we will have another MOU that will be established for July through March of next year. They just wanted to get us this funding. It's an odd time of year, I know. I'm not sure why that happened, but that's all we're asking for. It'll help pay some case manager salary, and then we'll figure out, come July, if that funding continues, then what, we're going to, if, hire a temporary person or something for that.
So based on what you said, my understanding is that there will be a handoff at the end of the time to another...
Yes.
To someone who will help and assist them.
Right. So we currently provide, we have a partnership with the Wycomico County Health Department. They provide targeted case management to our clients that are in housing, but it's just not intensive case management. It's just, it's different. Intensive is much more frequent, so essentially, we would hand them off to the Health Department to continue the targeted case management.
Okay.
So if they're in our housing program, they always have case management services. It's just that this provides that intensive. So it wouldn't be everybody that we put in housing, because everybody we put in housing doesn't need it, but we definitely get those ones that definitely need that intensive, where they're being checked in on at least once a week, and providing some additional income support services, like teaching them how to budget and those kinds of things, because in some cases, they do return to homelessness because of it. They've never, when you've had no responsibility financially, and you haven't had to spend your money on things besides food, and then all of a sudden you have bills to pay, it can be a huge transition. So that's what this funding is for, is to provide those permanent, those intensive case management services, once they're, getting them into housing, and then for nine months following.
Questions from the council?
I think it's a good thing.
That's great.
It's excellent.
Glad we can, glad you found it, because it's one of the...
They found me, but, but it is. It's a, it's a, I think it's going to be very beneficial. We definitely have some people that could use it, for sure.
We have consensus to move it forward?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Nichols? Put that on the agenda. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Next, we have an ordinance to accept CFES donation for water fountain at Ben's Red Swings. Corey is...
Mr. President, I'll handle this one.
Okay, okay.
So, council, good afternoon. Before you, as an ordinance, accepting a $1,000 donation from the Community Foundation, which is housing the funding for Ben's Red Swings, the park, and improvements that occur there. Last spring, I guess at this point, Catherine Leighton, who, of the Leighton family, reached out about a new water fountain at the playground, and we agreed that we were going to cost-share the cost of a new city-standard water fountain, which is...
The bottle?
Which is quite nice, a refillable water station. So we entered into a partnership to get that installed, and it is up and operational and being used regularly. So this is just accepting that donation. We're grateful to the Leighton family for all that they do and for making that park a reality, and their continued contributions towards it.
Absolutely. They're good people. Do we have consensus to move that on? We do?
Yes.
And we have a discussion on dirt bike ordinances. And Chief, I think, does Chief have input on some of this?
We would like...
I think we do. You can come up and sit down and relax.
So I know dirt bikes is a tremendously difficult topic here in our city. We are, we are like many others across the nation in this regard. I could tell you that at the moment, we, Mr. Brody, I received your email, of course, and other department members were also looking into this matter prior to the email. I could tell you that right now, with our current legislative outlook and restrictions on law enforcement in general, pursuits are very problematic, to say the least. Therefore, we, we are working with our colleagues at the Sheriff's Department, and we have invited someone from the State's Attorney's Office to a work group on this problem so that we can all collectively get onto the same page. When it comes to legislation, what we have found, at least with SPD, is that we are lacking ordinance-wise, the ability to seize bikes, dirt bikes that we find that don't have anyone claiming ownership. We've worked with the State's Attorney's Office on this in the past, and unless the motorcycle is involved in a particular crime, there is not much push to seize that bike. So if, when we finish working on a final product, then we can come back to you with it, after we all, we all get on the same page in law enforcement with the best process foregone on this. But one of the recommendations, at least from us now at this early stage, is to consider a legislative remedy that would allow us to... is to consider a legislative remedy that would allow us to, in fact, seize these bikes that don't have any owners.
Chief, when you said they needed to have a violation, or you mentioned a violation, reckless endangerment would not be when they're doing wheelies at 80 miles an hour on Camden Avenue?
Sure, and the main issue is being able to identify that particular individual that's on that particular bike at the time. So when you're dealing with ordinary traffic violations versus the reckless endangerment, and we have to be able to positively put that particular individual on that bike at the time committing that particular violation. As egregious as it is, we typically don't have personnel in place to do that.
Gotcha.
Because the other weekend, I missed a telephone pole by inches. Trying not to hit a guy that didn't yield when I had the right of way. So, I mean, I don't want to hit him. But, you know, but it's probably gonna happen to somebody, because they're driving between vehicles on 13. I've seen it. I've seen them, you know, I mean, and this is like the number, like this is what we're getting at. So anything we can do legislative-wise that you think would be a tool, you know, we want to support you in that.
So, and I understand your frustration and the fear. And certainly the concern for everyone who's out there, whether they're pedestrians or operators of other vehicles. And certainly even my own officers have experienced kind of that shock and that fear that you, you know, you just went through. And I can tell you that, you know, you're not alone. When we do talk to individuals about this problem and parents or loved ones, it's not, it's not a real big concern. But unless you're actually involved in it, then it becomes very problematic. Unless you're experiencing it firsthand and you have to take evasive action yourself, you know, I can understand where there's this disconnect. The other piece of that is that we have had individuals crash. And what our experience is, is that once a crash occurs, there's usually a vehicle that follows.
Chase car.
A chase car. And they'll either load the individual up and take them to the hospital, or they'll take them out of the area to another hospital for treatment. If they don't need treatment, then they just leave the scene. Depending on the shape of the actual ATV or motorcycle, there will be another chase car that comes by, typically a truck that throws that particular bike or ATV in the back of the truck, and then they leave the area. So the only individual that's left there is the person, the other motorist, or the property owner that's had some property damage. And now they're left to repair that on their own. So it is a huge problem. It's something that we should not be dealing with in our community, and yet here we are. So I think there are some legislative remedies. I had an opportunity to review the information you sent out of Baltimore City. I have some grave concerns that we would be putting a lot of extra stress and burden on our business owners. You know, the local gas stations, who a lot of that legislation seems to be directed to. So we're trying to find a way legislatively to present to you something that we think that would be helpful. And work in conjunction with our partners at the other agencies to generate interest from our community members through Crime Solvers, where, you know, people can read Domain Anonymous and send in information on where folks might be storing these bikes, so that we can further our investigation that way.
I have, I've seen them in action, very close up as well. And I will say this, that there is a chase car. And we've seen chase cars. And if you are able to get a picture of the license plate of that chase car without leaving your hands free and doing it in a proper way, let your person that's riding with you take the picture. That might help. Because someone is gonna get seriously hurt at some point. And we appreciate the dilemma you're in in terms of, they're never gonna go where you are knowingly. So
They'll run right past the police station one day.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying if there's an officer around, they're not gonna, they're not gonna.
Yes. Like, are you really, for real?
It's a serious issue, and if there's anything we can do legislatively, we will.
Just to take you back in time, so 2019 and 2018 at US Conference of Mayors, Congressional Cities Conference, they held sessions on this topic in both cases, and there were panels, and there were tons of questions from the audience. But the biggest takeaway in the room was that nobody had a good answer. Because it is, from a tactical standpoint, it is a very effective means at avoiding Chief Duncan.
Right. Exactly right.
It really is. It offers a very slippery problem. And, you know, but I think the fact that this continues and persists, eventually there will be solutions that come up, so.
And it's also a multi-jurisdictional
Yeah, that's true.
issue, because they hit fruit and they're in Delaware. They're on county roads, they're on the state highway. So it's something that, you know, whatever we do legislatively, we should probably offer a similar package to the other place, so they can have the same tools and use it, not just in the city of Salisbury, but.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, I actually met with some young men probably in 2012 in reference to the dirt bikes, came to my house, we sat down and talked, and I asked them, I said, well, I'm a county commissioner right now, so maybe we can go to the county and get them to have a terrain for you to ride and be safe. No, that's not what we want. We want what they're doing in Baltimore. I'm like, well, I'm not gonna take part in this, because I'm not gonna be responsible for you hurting yourselves and hurting someone else. Now, I want to say, most of these young men who are riding these dirt bikes, they already know that they cannot be chased by police. They're smarter than we think. And I don't want to say the rest of what I was gonna say, but I understand, y'all know what I was getting ready to say. And they're manipulating the system all the way around. I don't like it, I don't think it's safe. Because when I'm out there on the road, or y'all out on the road and they're riding, our lives are at danger. I feel threatened, I feel like I'm like, what am I supposed to do? Do I stop? Or do I continue? If they make the wrong move, and then they'll turn around and want to sue us. Me, the city, the county, or whoever, when they're wrong. And I think, I know a lot of these young men are older, but I wish that the parents of these young men would have some kind of say in their lives and make a stand with these young men and women, or whoever riding, that you're putting their, only your lives in danger, you're putting other people's lives in danger. And it's not fair to the citizens of Wycomico County or the city of Salisbury for us to have to be tormented, like, because I feel like we're actually being tormented. Because they know that there's no jurisdiction with them. They can do whatever they want to do, and they do it. And I see it every single day. And I've gotten to the point where I don't even call the police, because I don't want the police to have to chase them and then end up in this a crash. And then here's the police in trouble. I just don't, and I just wish that you all, young people, would listen to us. I mean, you're laughing, Julie, but I'm serious. I wish they would just take the time and think about other people. If you're not thinking about yourself, think about somebody else. Think about the danger you put other people in. Because it's ridiculous. If I see him, I have to, I have to stop? Why should I have to stop? When I'm the motor vehicle who is registered to drive on the road and you're not? It's not fair. It's not fair to the citizens.
We all agree. We all agree. But it is an issue. Chief, thank you for your input.
Fair.
Absolutely.
Any other comments? I think we all.
Just give us an update when we can discuss it again, when you're ready.
Yep.
That concludes the regular agenda. And we do have a request for a comment, which I will honor. And Amber, if you want to come up and, you can go over there and make a comment. Thank you. State your name and your address, please.
My name is Amber Green, I live on 508 Dover Street, over in the Doverdale area, where I frequently see the dirt bikes. And so when I saw that it was on the agenda item, I wanted to present to the council some suggestions that, not just from myself as an individual, but conversations that I've had with youth who frequent our youth center, and also a lot of the young adults who you do see riding on the bikes. I do believe it is a public safety issue. We do have a lot of young people trying to relive the culture that is in Baltimore and DC. However, I do believe that the Eastern Shore has a very vibrant dirt bike, motorbike culture. When we look at racetracks and we look at different things like that. And so I just wanted to present to the council that we have to know that it is the Eastern Shore culture. And before there's any legislative ordinance, I do want to encourage to bring the community involved in talking about that legislation. And one of the possibilities or solutions that was presented to me was, if you're gonna pass a law, give us a grace period, especially with the seizures and getting the dirt bikes and things like that. I do think that young people need boundaries, they need lines. And if you just give them a free rein, they will test their limits. They will work the system, they will manipulate the system. But if you give them strict guidelines, give them strict rules, and then give them a grace period to follow those rules, you will be able to differentiate who are those who are manipulating the system and who are those who are just victims of just not knowing. And so whatever ordinance that is presented, I would just suggest that the council provide a grace period in that time period of maybe a year, to educate the community, talk about the roadway rules, talk about what are the steps to register a dirt bike, talk about what are the consequences if you do not have a dirt bike. Working with the county schools, trying to get the teens that are involved with dirt bikes who go to dirt bike tracks and go to the racetracks on Route 13, or they go to the drag speedway, getting involved with them and working together and trying to create a safe space to celebrate the Eastern Shore culture, which is dirt bikes. In addition to that, one of the suggestions that was presented to me is that a lot of young people actually do want their own dirt bike ramp. There's a lot of back roads, especially like in the Mardele area, or even within the city of Salisbury. And so because it's a, in a jurisdictional thing, we have to work with the county and with the city and then other areas, trying to identify a place where we can build a dirt bike place, where there is a place for them to go. In addition to that, that dirt bikes in the street, that is a culture. It is a dangerous culture, but if it's done correctly, and if it's done with doing a permit, like, we see motorcades all the time that are coming from Ocean City. They have a whole system, they have somebody who is leading, they're on a mic, they have the same privileges that these motorcycle bike clubs, they have. We should teach the young people how to implement those same systems. And so if there's a way to say, hey, we're gonna have a dirt bike caravan on, once a month, and if you want to do it, you have to do a permit with the city, you have to do a permit with the police department. Something to make them safe. I think that if we just put an ordinance out, it's going, we risk backlash. I did review the ordinance that's modeled by Baltimore, great ordinance, it did work. However, Baltimore received a lot of community backlash, because specifically with the seizures of taking the dirt bikes. What happened was, if there was a dirt bike just seen, and there was, there was no warrant needed, they could just pick up the dirt bike because they think the dirt bike is registered illegally. That caused a lot of discourse, a lot of upset in the community. And so I think it would just avoid that, if we just provide a one-year grace period before putting in the ordinance to where the consequences are in. And then also trying to work with county partners to try to see, what are the possibilities of creating a dirt bike area where ATVs and dirt bikes can be at? Just like how we have the Salisbury Skate Park and we have the Benz and Swings. I think we can look for some funding and try to see what possibilities they are. And so that was the suggestion that I'm bringing, not just as myself as a representative, but as a member of the City of Salisbury Youth Development Advisory Committee, but also as a youth advocate. And this is a topic that youth do talk about in our drop-in center. So thank you.
Thank you. I have to, April, I mean Amber, I have to, I was thinking of you, because you're getting upset, so just give me a second. I would like to respond in terms of the noticing in the grace period. There is no grace period in the law. And they are violating the law, number one, because the bikes aren't registered. In fact, the last one where the gentleman fell off, the last bike was stolen from Baltimore City. So there's no need for a grace period, because what they are doing is against the law. Secondly, knowing young people, when I've worked with them all my life, the people that are telling, talking about having a place to go are not the people who are driving on the city.
That's right.
They get their thrill and their jollies from making other people nervous and upset. That's a fact. I was, my wife and I were in a car and she got scared to death. And they looked around, and you could see their masks, because they can only see up to here. And when they looked at her, the kid gave her the salute. Like, I got you. So I think that there's an extreme difference between youth that want to, and I agree with you, that the youth that have dirt bikes that are registered and want to have a place, that's something you can look at. But that's not gonna resolve this issue. It will not. And I hate to disagree with you, but I have to say that that's.
Amber, now could I also say, I agree with you with having an actual forum for the community. Because maybe someone in the community could give us some solution to this problem. But as I said before, I have spoke to some of these young men. And they do not want to ride on a terrain. Now, as Jack said, some of them do because they're registered. But for the ones who are not registered, those young men that I see every day, they don't want to ride, they want to do just what they're doing, tearing people's nerves up. And I can't agree with that. And I understand you work with youth, and so do I, but I'm just not for this. And but as far as coming together as the community, having the community come together, I'm all for it. Because we need to, everybody needs to know what's going on, and what's gonna happen, and how it's gonna happen. And maybe they can come to us and give us some solutions to the problems. And maybe some of these parents who do not possibly know that their kids or their young men are riding these dirt bikes will be aware that they are at that time. I don't know, but, you know, I do agree with the community thing, but I just don't agree with a grace period either, because it's just too much going on, I mean, it's too much.
Thank you, April. Any other comments? All right, general comments from the council, Mr. Bodo? Ms. Jackson?
Not tonight.
Ms. Blake?
Just as always, if you're healthy enough, donate blood. Thank you.
Oh, I do have one, Jack. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There will be a Merlin Food Bank drive at the VFW 10159 at 11 o'clock Friday, I think it's May the 6th, yes. So if you're low on food and you need food, please come out. Thank you.
What time is it? 11?
It's from 11, hopefully it's 11. They've given us, I think, 100 boxes, so.
Spread the word.
Spread the word, make sure you get it.
Thank you, Michelle?
Not much this week, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Nothing really. Just want to thank council for discussion of some pretty important topics tonight. And I look forward to a relatively quiet week.
Great, thank you. I just have one brief comment, other than the fact of supporting Angelo's comment about blood. If you can give blood, we're still short. And second of all, following the presentation tonight, we are blessed with Kim and Julie. I will tell you, they do a phenomenal job, and their main job is to keep me out of trouble. So far, they've done a good job at that. And I hope that they continue it. But they are a class act, both of them. And we want to thank you for what you do for us. I appreciate it. And so does the rest of the council. I think I can speak for them. We do have a special meeting now. So at this time, I will call a special meeting of the Salisbury City Council. And again, this is May 2nd, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I will ask for a special meeting, the approval for a special meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Jackson, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Legislative agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to take the motion to approve ordinance number 2724 for the first reading.
So moved. Second. Wow.
It was harmony. I'll give it to Mr. Boda and Ms. Jackson.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good afternoon.
How's everyone?
Fine. Thank you.
Ordinance number 2724, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2022 general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department's operating budget. Whereas the city has declared a 2012 International Terror Star Horton ambulance a surplus and the vehicle has been sold at auction and whereas this vehicle was operated by the Salisbury Fire Department and whereas the city has received a total of $20,350.93 from the proceeds generated from the auction sale and placed the funds in the city general fund. And whereas the fire department has used for the funds received and requests that the funds of $20,350.93 be reallocated to the fire department operating budget for FY 2022. And whereas the budget amendment as provided herein must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and would end with the approval of four-fifths of the council of the city of Salisbury. Now therefore be in, and now therefore be enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the city of Salisbury's fiscal year 2022 general fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. A, increase the sale of fixed assets account 01000-469200 by $20,350.93 and increase the fire department's vehicle account 24035-534308 by $18,350.93 and increase the fire department buildings, building account, which is 24035-534301 by $2,000.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. Questions or comments from the council? Turning now, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2724 for the first reading. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2724 is approved for the first reading by a vote of five to zero. That concludes the items on the special agenda and if there's no more business, I, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Don't forget Saturday. Mac.